Late call of order. The Board of Education meeting for Monday, April 28th at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Will call please Liam Brady.
Here.
John Highstreet.
Here.
Nicole Emery.
Here.
Jennifer Baker here. Heather Ernie O'Ruthers.
Here.
Nicole Emery.
I'm sorry.
Andrew Litt.
Here.
And Amber Bracken. Mr. President, we have a call. Okay. So first we're going to start with our recognitions and presentations. So we're here today with our wrestling team. So Coach Ranger, did you, or?
Yeah.
You were out.
Al asked me to introduce Coach Ranger. It seems like on a regular basis that we're recognizing the wrestling program and all the great things they do. Every year it's excellence and it doesn't happen by accident. Coach Ranger spends numerous hours above and beyond developing this program. Like a big trees, he's really built those roots right into the ground. So this tree continually every year gives us all this fruit that we get to enjoy because these guys are all excellent, these ladies are all excellent. And again, beyond just the mats, but even like I said throughout the school, in the classroom, in our leadership programs throughout the building, they're just a model of a program. And just again, kudos to Coach Ranger. I'll let him continue from there.
Thank you. And that was really good. I got a five. Pretty good stuff, too. So yeah, like Mr. Moro said, this is, became a sort of an annual tradition, a chance to kind of more or less kind of brag about student athletes we have coming through our hallways and on our wrestling mats. And for those that are kind of new to the community or maybe watching for the first time, which maybe other things are going on, the way this works is we have, we have 120, this is not the whole team. There's a lot of kids playing baseball tonight, soccer, dance, you know, you name it, they got something going on. So this is only a fraction of the amount of kids that are actually wrestling in our community. We have 120 kids in our youth program. We actually have to cap it and usually I don't sneak any more than 120 in because I can't say no. We have about 20 to 25 middle schoolers on a regular basis and this year we had 35 plus in the high schools. So almost 200 kids touched the mat on a yearly basis here in Elginak and I think that's impressive for the size of our community. Quite a few of them are Elginak born and bred, but there's also quite a few of them that actually come here from other school districts. Obviously wrestling's a portion of that choice for them to make that school of choice thing, but they also believe in this place to be a great place to raise their kids, get a good education. So I know when we have the stuff coming up next month with the renewing the millage and all that kind of stuff, that's important. If you get a chance, go tour the facilities, go check out the new press box, the bootchers, the baseball stuff, go check out our wrestling room. It's a top notch place, so we believe a lot in this community and the wrestling program is a part of it. So wrestling wise, we had a really successful season youth wise and then all the high school teams. So I'm going to kind of rattle off quite a few names. Of our 120 kids that do youth wrestling, we actually have now had to create three levels. So we have, we call it a blue, gray, gold, but really it's like beginners, kindergarten, first graders, then we have our novice in the middle kids, and then we have our advanced. So they have to qualify for the state tournament, just like the high schoolers do. It's now gotten so competitive that, I mean, it's really difficult even just qualify for the state tournament. So this year, for the first time ever, we invited just state qualifiers, too. Normally we only recognize our placers, but for, I mean, we had 34 kids make it to the state tournament. At the end of the tournament, out of the 314 clubs, we took 14th. And some of those clubs are paid to participate, like All-Star clubs that have no affiliation with schools or whatnot. So of all the school based clubs, we're actually in the top 10, actually closer to the top five, I think about six or seven. So that's really impressive. Kids, youth wrestlers, I'm going to read your name. You get a certificate. Coach Joe is going to give you the certificate over on the other side of Doc Brady. So after I read your name, you're going to go shake all our school board members' hands and then Coach Joe keep them over there somewhere and we're going to get a picture when we're done. Okay? So here we go. First one is Harper Clark, who actually was a girl state champion this year, Harper Clark. Playing baseball tonight, used to catcher on his team. Cole Reims was also a state champion.
Congratulations.
We have our third state champion here tonight, Rocco Weisopf. He's actually a back-to-back state champion. Vincent Finn took second in the miley event, I think he's here tonight. Come on Vince, come on Mel. Blake Williams was a eighth grade state runner-up. I think he's probably playing baseball tonight, but Blake Williams, state runner-up. We have Baron Finn here tonight. She was third in the state for girls, Baron Finn. My nephew Hunter Perry took third in the state. He's playing baseball tonight, but my daughter's here on the Rangers. She took third in the state for girls as well. Couple more thirds are out there on the ball field, Jackson Wibbly and Knox Weisopf. But we do have the Clug Sisters. Harper already came by, but now we have Grace. Grace took fourth in the state. Another couple guys that live in another district, but they're not here tonight, but Isaiah Alshamali took seventh. Max Fox is an Elginak kid. He's playing baseball right now and he took seventh. Colton Perry's not here, he took seventh. We have the McCauley brothers both here. They took eight in the state. Come on McCauley. Randy Scobler's here. He took eight in the state, but he's got some sweet shades on. And then again, just a bunch of state qualifiers, but very hard, again, you have to take top four in your region. There's like 30 plus clubs in the region and a lot of these guys and gals got their first taste of the state tournament and I know they're back for next year. So I'm just going to read a little bunch more. Eli Alshmali, Gabe Alshmali, Carter Feltebarger, if I say her name, just start walking. Vance Finn, Tyler Floor, Matt McGregor, Marcus Morningstar, Lincoln Ranger, William Rose, Skyler Small, Marley Solgot, Philip Stumpfig, Everett Tucker, Elliott Young. And I think that's it. That is the youth state qualifier. Youth guys and gals, don't sit down, stay over there. So now I wanted to kind of talk a little bit about the high school team. Coach Jake, would you like taking those trophies kind of out there by that microphone? So we brought a little show and tell tonight. People I know are visual. Yeah, all the way out there. Get that big McComb one out here. This one is my favorite. We haven't had this one ever before. These other ones are kind of down there, done that, but I still like to talk about them. So the big one that's about as tall as I am, that's the McComb County trophy. So probably since the 1970s, they've had the McComb County Invitational, two-day tournament. There's like 40 teams in it, biggest schools in the state type of, you know, Dakotas, Romeos, all that kind of stuff. No school our size had ever won it. So we won it this year. You only get to keep it for the year, then you got to return it, but they're going to probably have to pry it out of our hands next year because we've got a pretty good squad coming back next year. So we won that about Christmas time. We also, you know, like beat Dakota in a duel meet, so we, we like to think we are the team to beat McComb County and we obviously have the trophy to back that up. Also up there, BWAAC champions, third year in a row. This year was outright, didn't have to share it, so that was a good one. And then district champions, and then we've wrestled at the team regional level for almost, I think, 10 out of the last 12 years. So ranked second or third all year as a team, had a very successful season, always pushing the envelope, raising the bar at that end. But we also had 12 individuals, more than 12 did well this year. 12 made it to Ford Field, which tied a school record. So I'm going to read their names off. You guys got to take the lap, too. I think they're in this order. I could be wrong. Coach Joe can shuffle the certs if not, but we're going to start at the top. We had a boy state champion for only, I think, like the fourth or fifth time in school history. He was undefeated this year. The most dominant season in school history, state champion, committed to Appalachian State, Division One scholarship, Reed Hilton. Max, man, he's tough to follow, but Sky Langiewicz is a four-time All-Stater. State champ, state champ, third in the state, second in the state this year. Just an incredible career. I'm going to talk about the grades eventually, too, but Sky Langiewicz, state runner-up this year. I want to Julie's here. We had another state runner, Julie Walker. He's probably out there running on a track. So, but again, great season for him. I know we have our other state runner up in the house, Lucky Darton. Go ahead, Lucky, start walking. Lucky is the all-time leader in wins in Elginak history and it's a who's who on the list, the ranks, the B wins. 204 career wins, 138 pins. Tomorrow he's signing to take his talents to the University of Olivet, Olivet University. And we had more on the podium. Chris Campbell is the first four-time All-Stater. Michael, Coach Chris Campbell. 193 career wins. Again, I said four-time All-State, incredibly hard to do because you have to place in the states as a freshman to be a four-time All-State. Speaking of freshmen, TJ Landrum, sixth in the state. So you've got a shot, Chris. Champion, BWAAC champion, sixth in the state freshman, TJ Landrum. We have Jack Reyes. And then we also have our state qualifiers, that all of them won matches or did very well. Just making it to Ford Field is a huge accomplishment. So when I say your name, just start walking. Chase Scobler, Alex Bright, Vance Tilly, Connor Haddon, and Trevor Jarvey, also. Since the guy over here, and a lot of us are still standing.
Congratulations.
All my seniors that are here, can the seniors come out for a second? Sorry, we're going to make it go through this a little bit longer. No, in the middle, in the middle, like stand in front of these seats are here, so everyone can see it. So this isn't all the seniors. We had eight seniors on the team this year, but six of them made it to the state tournament. Six of them aren't all here tonight, but pretty darn close. You know, the eight seniors actually had over 1,000 wins in an Elginak Muskrat single combined, 135 and 12 over the last four years and actually did not lose a match in the BWAAC over their four years, 26-0. So a round of applause just for the seniors. Julian, Jack Reyes, come on out here, too, because you're active in the Gulf State. These four seniors not just tearing it up on the mat, Jack Reyes Jr. tearing it up on the mat, they're actually academic All-State and even a whole bunch of the other ones over there have really good GPAs. You just can't get to academic All-State until you're a 10th grader. As a team, we had a 3.84 GPA, which is the third highest in the state in Division III. And again, just having the youth here and then having our seniors, the seniors that have been, Jack, have been in the program the longest, you know, as a community, if you invest in your youth and notice that staying, I mean, look what happens. So thanks for having us out tonight. You know, another great season, Elginak wrestling, but again, it's more than just wrestling. It's a great community. Thank you, guys. Mrs. Harris wants a picture. Over there.
I got kindergarten.
There you go.
Oh, okay. All right. No worries. Yeah. No worries.
I'll let everyone know that.
This is a different side group, so make sure this is.
I know a lot of you came to the wrestling. You're welcome to leave after you're done here.
Coach Thomas, you will show.
So we'll move on to our consent agenda items. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. The Board of Education approves all consent agenda items, including agenda, math, personnel items, administrative reports, and the files that were submitted, those that need to be approved.
Support.
Thank you, Governor Perry. I'm excited to have you on.
Discussion.
Call on tomorrow.
All those favors there.
6:00 AM, 1:00. We're going to have some open mats tomorrow.
Come out tomorrow.
Information items. So the information items, there's our recent budget, our tech program. There, so information is attached. We have the recent budgets, memo, budget, and then there's also the tech program. Please, take a minute, look it over. It was also emailed to you and my attention to my email last week that went out to the board, so take a look at it. They got some of the research from Brenda Tess, which is the superintendent's person. She'll be out next month to kind of go over it, but if you can take a minute to look it over and then I believe we'll, we'll be attached item next month to that's the version.
And one thing about that is Brenda does it the way, what does this mean? Yep, a couple of previous recent superintendents, it has come out, explained well enough in the materials that their actual talking about it doesn't really take very long, but it's good that they come down to see us and, you know, acknowledge our existence because there were superintendents at the RISA or the ISD that at times did not really take very much care of the downriver folks. It was, you know, all up there, so it's been really good.
Yeah, Brenda's really great. All right, move on to our administrative reports. Mr. Melrose.
Yep, speaking of tech, we had a couple of students who participated in the Skills USA and we had a couple of medalists, both fell in the cosmetology portion. We had Ellie Brooks who got a silver for the aesthetics competition and then we had Adriana Gable who got a bronze for nail care. So congratulations to them. And then also a couple of weeks ago, we had our BWAAC luncheon. We have that every year where we recognize five of our top academic students here. It's based on a straight four-point scale on their core classes as well as their SAT scores. And so our representatives were Jenna Dusenberry, Caroline Roland, Trevor Youngle, Sky Langiewicz, and Avery Baker. And then we also recognize our two outstanding athletes, one female and one male, and they were Reed Helman and J.C. Rimes. So congratulations to them. We also had a couple of weeks ago for our third quarter, our Muskrat Level Trip went to David Buster's. That went well. We just last Friday completed our PSAT and SAT and workies testing and we just started today, went into the M-step testing for the school. This Friday for our seniors, we have decision day, which is going to be sixth hour in the main gym. Again, Mrs. Orlando will take it over that and will be leading that, but again, that'll be sixth hour this week. Coming up, May 14th, we're going to have the art auction, which will actually be here in the library. It'll be that week where people could get a piece of work from our school here. On May 16th, the Friday, we'll have the performance of Matilda. It'll be 7:00 PM, they'll be at the Algonquin Auditorium and they'll be performing art 7 through 12. And then May 21st, we have a band concert, it'll be in the main gym. And this part, this one is not a great thing that has important to the board. We found out yesterday through email that we will no longer have college advisors here at the school. We were informed that due to federal cuts in funding, that has been eliminated. So the MSU people that have sponsored this let us know that yesterday. Very heartbreaking because as I said, it's been integral since I've been here. They've done outstanding job getting our kids, doing their FAFSA, helping direct them when it comes to college and career and just kind of, it's been a really good area for the kids to work on those things. So that's a big loss and again, we just found out, so we're going to be scrambling to see how we can kind of fill that void, but again, a big loss to the school and other suburbs around the districts as well.
That's been an outstanding program and I've seen it since it started and we've, the people that have been sent to us to do that for two years at a time have been nothing short of outstanding people. I mean, they really, it's, as I say, it's a huge loss.
Yeah. They were to build my daughter's journey, so that's sorely missed. Mrs. Sage?
So since we were here last time, we started M-step testing. The kids are doing a fantastic job as always. It's a long test, especially for elementary age students, but they're powering through and doing their best, so we're pretty proud of them. We've also started a formal peer-to-peer program at Elginak. We've kind of informally done something called Links throughout the years, but Alexis Bremer, our speech pathologist, and Elena Gottler really want to do it formally the right way. We have weekly trainings with the students, the Gen X students, that will be helping, not really helping, we want them to be their friend and not their caregiver. So we've been spending a lot of time doing that. It's been pretty successful and the students have been able to get together at least once a week for a fun activity also. So I'm looking forward to seeing that program grow. Our fifth graders just did an Earth Day art show, so they cleaned up a bunch of garbage around their houses that made it into some beautiful artwork and that was on display for Earth Day. And our third graders went to Gold Park for the Earth Fair. They go there every year. That was a really fun day last week. Currently, we are doing vision and hearing testing at Elginak in Millside, just a screener. If the students don't pass, their parents get a formal letter in the mail saying you need to go look into this more and see where we're at. So we're halfway through that. Also this year, our run club has turned into a very robust program and we have tons of kids doing it. So Mr. Nutter, Mrs. Pazora, and Mrs. Schott are out there wrangling about like 50-plus elementary kids, but they're doing great and they're running around everywhere and they're keeping up, so that's been fun. Next week is staff appreciation. Our PTO has a lot of fun things in store for the staff. Also, Mrs. Dagowski will be doing her annual bio blitz on May 9th. It's Friday, starts at 9:30. Everybody is welcome to attend. We also, gosh, I didn't realize we had so much going on. We also have, Mr. LeCary is doing ACES. It's where the whole school will be doing synchronized workout together, being active outdoors. So we are next Tuesday, I think that's the sixth, Millside and Elginak students are going to go out in the field in between and Mr. LeCary is going to lead them in some physical activity. And lastly, we also are doing Matilda. My sixth graders are performing it on the Thursday night and then the high school will perform it on Friday night at Elginak.
Thank you. Mrs. Bisky?
All right, so since we last met, Mrs. Grove and Mr. Thaler were able to team up to organize a reading visit from the varsity baseball team. So the players were able to visit our classrooms and read aloud and engage in conversations with our students, which is always well received. I'm not sure who gets a bigger kick out of it, the little seed figs or the figs fielding there, interesting questions. Upon returning from spring break, both Millside and Elginak were able to enjoy our rescheduled visit with the Ann Arbor Hands-on Museum. So we had staff and students and volunteers engaged in, again, great conversations and learning as they rotated through a variety of science-based stations. This past Friday was actually pretty packed. After recognizing our most positive leaders, our students were able to visit the Lions Club along with students at Elginak, too, all throughout the day. They were able to see the Carebag Movement underway. The high school students did a wonderful job teaching about the movement and illustrating the importance of helping others and working together as a community. Also, Mrs. Humes had organized a resource day for families in her classroom to come in and collaborate and learn more about the various resources that are available beyond the classroom. And also thanks to the PTO and generous contributions from our families, the community, and the junior, senior high honor society members, we were able to enjoy another successful spring carnival for all of our elementary families. For the past couple of weeks, our physical education teacher, Mr. LeCary, has been taking our kindergarten and TK students over to Elginak for his annual bike unit. The last couple of weeks, they've been working on balance and steering, but today was very exciting to see them get to use pedals for the first time, so they're really enjoying that as well. Looking ahead, we have staff appreciation next week as well as kindergarten roundup and we'll be hosting a book fair as well and then starting our NWVA testing.
Thank you. Ms. Posa?
We have been very busy with the end of the year approaching. Preschool teachers have been preparing for conferences, end of the year party, and graduation. We also have been preparing for a busy summer. So far we have scheduled Bugs on Wheels, Little Bubble Man, Science Alive, and the Ice Cream Truck. I know there's a couple of teachers that also volunteer their time to come over, the art teacher, to do a little craft with them and then, I forget who the other one was, but there's another one coming over and then the football team is coming over, too, to do like a little football camp for the week. So that will be fun and new. Summer registration is open for preschool grades, but all the other classrooms are full and all staff and kids have been really enjoying spending more time outside during these warm-up tapes.
Thank you. Mrs. Tanner?
Yeah, it's been busy everywhere, I think. Today I was fortunate to be able to work with the elementary staff during their professional development meeting. We worked on the assessments for marking period three for their reading curriculum, looking at what that might look like. A report card committee has also been formed. We have representatives from all K-5. They'll start that work on June 16th, so they're going to do that in the summer. We spent a lot of time talking about the progression and things we were worried about and how that looks now and lots of positives coming out of the ELA hearing for the teachers. So it was nice to hear those in-depth, engaged conversations today about how it's going. So that was good. We'll be closing the profile of the graduate survey at the end of this week and looking at the results, the common themes and tenants and what the community and the staff and the students said. So we've had a decent amount of people respond to it, so we'll do one more push this week and see if we can get a few more answers to those survey questions. The sixth through eighth grade ELA teachers have been meeting and will meet again in May. We're hoping to finalize some curriculums to pilot for next year, so we're looking for some piling of resources next year for sixth through eighth grade ELA. So they've been working on that this year. The district MiKIP team met at the RISA and worked as county to finalize our goals and our district MiKIP plan and some strategies. We'll bring that for a district improvement plan, inviting in stakeholders from all levels coming up here on May 13th in the evening. So we'll get those invites coming out. The secondary science staff met after school recently and we began discussions on the science curriculum, what's working currently, some areas that still need to be addressed. Conversations were productive and they'll continue, so some good conversations between that seventh through 12th grade science staff, really great. And the leadership team met today to start discussions on, with the possibility of the profile of the graduate coming down, what does that look like to build positive culture and leadership throughout K-12 by sharing common language as well as lessing scopes and sequences that would meet that profile of a graduate needs? So those discussions are happening, too, so more on that to come.
Great, thank you. For reports.
I'd just like to, just like to say how Friday, when I stopped by the Lions Club, how nice the Carebag Movement was this year. Again, it keeps growing and growing every year and I thought it was pretty neat that you guys brought all the kids over from, over from Millside, Elginak over there. So it was really happening. So if you never, if you ever get a chance when they have one, walk through there because it was, it was really cool.
It's such a great program, too.
And to tag on what Bill has to say is, the program is, it was a great idea. It serves a very excellent purpose and I don't know who enjoys having the Millside students come over more, the summers, the high school kids or the students themselves, because it's a ride. It is a highlight of the whole thing when all those kids come cruising through there. It's pretty awesome.
It was funny, they were a bit, I want more to tell you, Andy's. It was funny because all the high school kids I walked, when I walked in, they were in the president's room in the back and they're all sitting around the couches saying, "So what are you guys all doing here?" And they said, "We're waiting for the next group of kids to come over." They were just, they were so into, they really enjoyed it. They really enjoyed it. That was really good.
That's great. Anyone else? I just wanted to say that I did send out my April email and a lot of the stuff that some of the principals were talking about, a lot of those dates are listed, so if you're looking at some end of the year events, kind of summarized them all if you didn't write it down or forgot. There's a lot of information on there. So Jennifer and I attended the SEC ASB meeting on Tuesday, last Tuesday. So it was really great. They had, what's her name from?
Jennifer Smith.
Jennifer Smith did a legislative update that was really interesting. There's a lot going on right now, funding and all that kind of stuff, so that was very informative. One of the guys did a presentation on the Open Meeting Act update, specifically on public comments, so that was really great information. And then the update from the RISA superintendents and directors. If you're interested in any of that, if you weren't able to attend, I can see if I can get the slideshows or something and maybe we can share it. Yes, that's about it. Again, look at the dates, especially the graduation and end of the year stuff, so that these guys can be available.
can be available. All right, so no other board reports. Um, obviously, Al's not here. He is, um, Washington DC, so, uh, unless, he didn't give me any updates, so we'll move on. Do we have any visitors?
No.
Okay, I don't see any. Okay, so we'll move on to action items. So our first action item is the athletic storage building. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approves and awards the athletic storage building projects the lowest bidder star modern civilization in the amount of seventy-two thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-six cents.
You wish support? Sure. All right, now, move to supportive, um, discussion, I don't know, did you want to...
I just have a couple of questions for Evan.
Okay.
Um, that came through, just, I, um, one, 'cause the bidding was so close, so, you know, in the last two bid, in the last few bidders, so I just wanted to ask a couple of questions by looking at it. Is that price that we're going to prove today, is that going to include the drain field? Everything is going to be drained and everything's going to be done?
No, it does not include any drain fields, any drain tile or anything like that. That was not included on the bid.
Okay, was that included on the other, on the...
Doesn't matter, it wasn't included in the bid that we requested. Bidders bid the project that we put out, they don't bid what they want to bid.
Okay.
Because there's no way for us then to do an apples-to-apples comparison of the bids that they bring in.
Okay.
And so other people could say, "We're gonna build it out of a different type of lumber, we're gonna build it out of a different type of steel." It doesn't matter. If you upgrade the building, you need to eat the cost. The school is looking for the least expensive bid to build what we've asked the builders to build for us.
So, so then that's gonna cost an extra expense then?
But it's a pole barn, there's no drainage needed for a pole barn. We can later down the road put gutters on the building, and then it will be up to the district to then route that runoff water.
Okay, and the land and all the sand and everything, that's all included in the cost, and then leveling up everything?
What was on the bid, so we require a four-inch of crushed concrete base, and then a four-inch sand, leveling sand on top of that, it will take more than that.
Okay.
But that's on the district because of where we chose to put this building, which was chosen after I already put the bid out. So because it's going now, instead of replacing the garage that's back by the, uh, football stadium, it's going near the practice field, that grade is steep, so that will be a change order to the project, because we have to bring that building up to level with the practice fields.
Okay, and those, and the trusses and everything are gonna be on a twenty-four, on a twenty-four inch center, those trusses too?
Yes, and, and the building is being permitted by Clay Township, they are ones that dictate how the building is built, not the district. We didn't include that in our specs.
Right.
Because everything has to be permitted through the township. They will be the ones that tell the builder how they have to build it.
So when we looked at those bids, and we looked at that, and we compared, and I'm not, and we compared everything as far as...
No, we compared what the bid was. Again, we can't, we can't go outside of the bid, because then it's not again fair to the, all the bidders.
But so how about structure, as far as structure?
Well, again, that'll be up to Clay Township to permit the building, they're not gonna permit a building if it doesn't meet construction standards for the township.
Um, the location, you say it's not gonna be where the garage was, it's being moved...
That is not what I've been told, no. I had, I had, uh, Mr. Landrum stake out where they want the building, and it is directly behind the new, uh, stadium bleachers, just on the other side of that little road.
Is that...
I don't dictate those things, I'm told, I'm told what the building, where to build it, that's...
So just when we do a bid, we're just saying we need, because this is, how big is this building gonna be?
Yeah, so we bid a thirty-by-seventy-by-twelve-foot tall building.
Okay, so, so you just say, "This is what we need."
Yes.
They, uh, different bids, but we don't look at, okay, this one says, okay, we're gonna do better on the trusses, or we're gonna use instead of two, uh, four-by-six, we'll do, uh, four-by-fours, which it could be passed by the, you know, the, yeah, four, yeah, four-by-fours are fine, but if the bid was, and somebody said, "We're gonna put four-by-sixes," which is better...
Uh, the building's gonna be built out of six-by-sixes, but regardless, that doesn't matter to the bid unless we specify. We can't all of a sudden start taking somebody's bid, because, I mean, I had bids all the way up to a hundred and seventy, or a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. You can bid me the Taj Mahal, but when I ask for a camper, I'm not gonna now take the Taj Mahal, it's not fair to the bidders. It's, they're supposed to bid the project that we put in front of them, and there is a timeframe for them to contact me and ask questions. All questions are then taken and put out as an addendum on the same website. There was three addendums to this project, so every question that was asked of me on the project was answered.
And shared with the other bidders?
Yes, we, I, and any bidders that contacted me, we push it back out, letting them know, "Hey, there's another addendum out there," so that everybody can go out and get the new information.
So they're all bidding on the same information?
So they're all bidding...
Nobody's getting like this information and...
Basket of apples, not someone trying to sell me a basket of apples.
Do we have any more questions? Um, so there has been a motion and support, so, um, all, the all paper, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Uh, what do you want to move to? All these are another one. Just in case.
This is the one that worried me the most, was the one that's coming out.
Uh, okay, so, uh, next we're moving on to the, uh, Algonquin and Millside parking lot crack fill and seal coating bid. Does anybody like to make a motion? No? All right, I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approves and awards the Algonquin Elementary and Millside Elementary parking lot crack fill and seal coat projects to the lowest bidder prime results in the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Support.
This is the same one that did the jab over the summer?
What's that?
This is the same company that did the jab over the summer?
No, this is a completely different company, so this...
I'm just wondering, 'cause I, this parking lot is, I tried to push a popcorn cart just out to the concessions day the other day, it was horrible.
And, and I had other people say that about this, we gotta remember, we took something that was absolutely horrible, and the, the, I don't wanna get on this, but the cost to replace this was four million dollars.
Yeah.
We put lipstick on a pig to try and save this parking lot, because we don't have four million dollars, so, and this is something that we should've been doing for years, and the district hasn't. So this is the exact same project that I did at Mills, or Algonquin and Millside, um, two years ago.
Okay.
We're gonna do it again, we're gonna do it again here, not to the extent we just did, because we added here, but this seal coating is something, and crack sealing is something that we should be doing as general maintenance on our parking lots to keep them in good shape. So I'm, I'm probably gonna do every other year one of these lots until we've got three layers of the stuff built up, and then this...
Does it get better as you put more on it?
Yeah. I, I don't wanna say it's gonna get better, I mean, you've seen the parking lot, you've seen how alligatored it was, you've seen how many cracks are in it. We're gonna make it a little nicer and try and save it.
So it'll hopefully keep it from getting worse, hopefully?
Yeah, Algonquin and Millside, I think I can save that lot.
Yeah, that one's...
That's, that is in bad shape. This one is still in bad shape, but we're making it a little better every time we do this. Maybe the district will be able to get another eight, ten years out of it, I don't know, but the cost to replace this campus is a substantial amount of money.
So even though we're taking, again, there was a big difference in between the bids?
Yes.
So my question is this, if we're going with the lowest bidder, like even on this one, and, and this is for future information, we're getting the same quality from this lower bidder?
Yes, I tried...
As much as we're going to get it from the guy who's up here?
Yes. I tried to sh-holes it, I called this company multiple times, they're coming from Alpena, they are under by twenty...
Right.
Thousand dollars. They're telling me they're still gonna be able to make money off of this, which makes me worry, because is everybody else just making a whole lot of money off of us? But I've called their references, I've called them to make sure they understood the square footage of the job, and they assure me they do, so I, I couldn't come here and tell you why I would go with a higher bidder. I mean, when, when there's a disertency like that...
That's a big difference.
You know what I mean? With the pole billing, where we have different, you know, ninety to seventy thousand dollars, all right, that's kinda doable, but I, I can't think of any reason why I wouldn't tell you to take the lowest bidder on this one. I will be watching.
Do, do they have like a date when they're coming, or...
We, we have to work that out. Once this happens tonight, then we will contact them, of course, it's after school, we've got, um, a carnival that likes to park in that parking lot.
I just know it's used kind of a lot.
What's that?
I just know it's used a little bit, so...
Yeah, so there's a lot of things that we have to juggle on, I've let that bidder know that, and they said they're fine with that, they'll work section by section, just like the last time we did this. So I, I hope by the end of the summer, I'm coming back knowing, "Look, I saved you twenty thousand dollars."
Right on. And then you can only go with what you, information you have, I guess, so...
What's that?
You can only go with the information you have, so...
Right, yeah, I mean, if there was something else...
You did your due diligence following up with them, so...
Even with the pole, I contacted that builder, we, I, we walked the site with him, we, you know, we, we tried to vet this stuff out, because, and I don't want problems as we end up thrown on this.
Just a question that I need, is with the pole barn or with putting the asphalt down? What, what is it, okay, let's say this asphalt company comes in, and all they have is a black spray paint, just, okay, we're done.
There's, there's standards that they all have to meet, I'm not gonna try and remember all of them.
Okay, but if, I mean, if they don't meet the standards, is what I'm saying. So we hired them, we pay them, and then they come in and they don't meet the standards, then...
Then we'll end up in court.
Okay. Because that's...
And then when, if we have to order it out...
Well, the pole barn, so yeah, we kinda did it that way, and the whole pole barn fall falls down.
Right, then we're in court.
Okay.
And, you know, Clay Township won't permit it and those type of things, you know, I don't think, I don't think Clay Township is going to permit a building that they have, especially at a school, and I called Clay Township before we took on that project to make sure, "Hey, you guys are, are good with this." Because, you know, anything that I build out there, I want it permitted, I can't say that's...
Yeah.
So that's one thing that we are insisting on, and, and if it comes back and it doesn't get permitted, then I'll be back here in another month saying we're doing it again.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't think that's gonna happen.
All right, uh, move to discuss, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Senator.
Thank you.
Thanks, Evan.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Everybody says it. The most popular motion. All right, um, we've been supportive, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, thank you all.
I think we should move on to the...
This is for me to take. Yes, this is for you, bro. Thank you very much. It's about to be out, it's, yeah, because you can't sanitize the...
We have a lot of you.